I'll call this June 18, 2012 meeting in order and I'll ask you all to please stand and recite with us the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call or roll, Steve, please.
Yes, sir. Crisilius?
Here.
Cromwell? Felcey?
Here.
Schramke? Shadle?
Here.
Tyler?
Here.
Chairman Manchester?
Here. Oh, you have the minutes motion?
Yes, I do. I move that the reading of the minutes of June 4, 2012 be waived and that minutes of said meeting as prepared by the Secretary be approved as written.
Second.
Second, but Tyler, any discussion, addition, corrections? There are meeting on call roll, please.
Felcey?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Earl, you have the wisdom number one?
I do. I move that a resolution entitled, "Resolution Constituting the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Closing of Garfield Street Between Chester Heck Drive and Coxey Street," be adopted.
Second.
Second, but Crisilius, discussion. You have any questions of the engineer? Mike? I don't know if they have any questions or not.
I'd be happy to answer them if they are. This is just a street that's, there's really, it's never been put in, it's unimproved, and it's between really Irvin Cobb Drive where it comes up over the overpass of the railroad, same way with Chester Heck. It could never, in other words, extend and connect to those roads because they're, the embankments, of course, are high, there's guard rails there, so it's a, it's a street that was platted probably in the late 1800s, but it's just never been built, and there's really no reason for it to be built, so Randy owns on both sides and he's just going to close it. There is a city storm sewer that goes through there and we've provided a 20-foot easement for the city for that.
This property is owned industrial also, so by closing this, it puts one large track that could be used in the future.
Questions? Call roll, please.
Tyler?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Felcey?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Kathy, you have 618-2.
I move that a resolution entitled, "Resolution Constituting the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Amendment of the Goals and Objectives Presently Set For by the Comprehensive Plan," be adopted.
Second.
Second, but Felson. Steve, you have a...
I, in general, we've already had one public hearing on this. I went back to the office and cleaned them up a little bit more. I would be happy, what you see is from the, before you are the original goals and objectives, and then the underline are the, is what is proposed to be added, and the strike through is what is proposed to be taken out. If you'd like, I'd be happy to go through all of them of what is being added as proposed for the goals and objectives.
Been that many changes, I notice?
No, sir.
Y'all have any specific questions you'd like to address to Steve?
What was the particular reason for scratching the improved landscape and standards?
When the original comprehensive plan was adopted in 2007, we were just in the process of updating our landscape regulations. Now, we have a section within this zoning ordinance, you know, called Landscape Regulations, where in general it says anytime you have a certain number of parking spaces within the city, you've got to improve a certain percentage of the parking area with impervious cover, including a percentage of trees based upon the number of parking spaces. So I felt that the existing landscape regulations we had in place now were sufficient, and that goal had been accomplished.
Some of the rest of them are just housekeeping things.
Yeah, and as I'd mentioned the last time, quite a bit of it also is, is when we were preparing the plan, it was a joint city-county plan. Now that we're re-adopting those goals and objectives, I've tried to pull those sections out where it really is not a city-county type objective anymore, it's more of a city objective.
Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions they'd like to ask concerning the goals and objectives of a comprehensive plan?
And I would make one other comment too, if I may, sir.
Yes.
You'll, you'll notice that the entire chapter six, which is growth management, has been stricken as far as goals and objectives, because that generally dealt with a completely different type of zoning concept and areas outside the existing city limits.
Correct. No comments from, questions of any of you? Feel free to come up. Call roll, please, Steve.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Felcey?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Don, you have the image graphic number 618-3.
Yes. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Image Graphics, Inc., and David and Sandra Long for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 2701 and 2725 Wayne Sullivan Drive. A further move that the requested approval be given in compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second.
Second, but Tyler?
This is a property down on Wayne Sullivan, at the corner of Wayne Sullivan and Tully Street. It's where the Image Graphics building is located. There's presently a property line that lies underneath the building. We're abolishing that and establishing a new property line accommodating for a 25-foot side yard, thereby just sort of some house cleaning, cleaning that up. There were comments from Engineering Department and Planning Department to me regarding the plat, and those have been incorporated into the filed plat.
Those changes made?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? What's the G668 that was referenced? Remember what that was?
That was, I think this was when this property was divided up through the urban renewal.
Probably the original plat booking page?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's where this, these buildings setback were established is where that's, what that's referencing to.
There is one change that was not listed within your staff report that the Planning Department asked them to make, and that was the plat that you see is, shows the side yard being 10-foot. Because this building is over 10,000 square feet, there's a 25-foot side yard requirement, so that's been included within your...
That's correct.
...amended plat.
I wondered about that, but I assumed you all had...
Okay. Call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Shadle?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Felcey?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Oh, you have the application of Mercy Regional EMS for conditional use at 3545 Coleman Road.
Yes, I do. I move that this commission recommend approval to the Board of Adjustments regarding the application of Mercy Regional EMS in Chris and Lori Champion for the conditional use permit to allow a heliport to be constructed at 3545 Coleman Road.
Second.
Second, but Crisilius. The ingress and egress will be enlarged, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
I'm assuming that all regulations with the FAA have also been approved as well.
Right. What I, if you remember, approximately a month ago, there was a text amendment that was brought before the Planning Commission to allow heliports in the M1 zone as a conditional use. This is following on the tails of that after Planning Commission approval. It does have to go to the Board of Adjustment, that's when we had the public hearing. I would, Lisa Emmons with Dinah Koehler though can probably answer that question concerning FAA.
And I'm not certain that I can, but I have people with me that can answer that. I'm here on behalf of Mercy Regional, and I have Dr. Irvin Smith and also Randy Harris. So if you all would like to step forward and explain where we are in that process with the FAA, I'm sure that we will be complying with our requirements.
Hello, good evening. I'm Irv Smith. I'm the medical director for Mercy Regional and also for PHI Air Medical. That's our local air medical operation here in Paducah, McCracken County. And we are planning on entering into a joint venture with PHI Air Medical. Our current helicopter base is out on Oaks Road, it's at the old Farrington Airport site. We've been there for eight years. That, that site's going through a transition, they're going to turn that into a high-performance drag strip for the Class A Dragsters or whatever, and our aviation folks feel like that's just not going to be compatible with us having the base out there. We would, in talking with, between Mercy and the PHI folks, we would like to work closer with that air medical operation. We want that aircraft to stay in Paducah, we obviously need it to stay in Paducah. There is this piece of property which is immediately south of our headquarters on Coleman Road. We're working with the, we're in the process of trying to purchase that. We're going to convert, there's a ranch-style brick house there now, it's, it's a nice house, we're going to convert that into crew quarters. We'll build a helipad with your all's approval, we'll build a concrete helipad, and also a building, a, basically a big pole barn that is about 50 of 120 feet, that will serve as a storage for the aircraft for inclement weather, and we'll also use half of it at Mercy Regional. We have, our aviation folks, our lead pilot Lynn Philpott has been in communication with the FAA folks out at Barclay Tower, and they have all the aviation issues worked out. Our, we do have a fuel facility that goes with that base, that's already been approved, that's in operation now, it meets all the state fire marshal requirements and all that. So that's, that's where this project is, that's where this project is going. The PHI lease is up in the fall out at the current facility, so we think we can have this up and running by that time, be a smooth transition. We, we plan on painting and, and the exterior facades of those buildings will look just like the current Mercy Regional buildings, it'll, it'll look like one facility.
I think it'll be a nice addition to the city, it'll be moving from county to the city.
Y'all have any questions?
Just one other.
Earl?
Yes, sir.
That fuel tank that's going in, will that be an underground tank?
No, sir, it's, it's, it sits on top of the ground, it's a, it's a self-contained unit with the pump, it's about 4,000 gallons of jet A. But we are, the PHI company, that's, that, the PHI stands, the PHI stands for Petroleum Helicopters Incorporated, international company that primarily does work in the oil and gas business, carrying the workers out to the oil rigs. They're about, 20% of their business is air medical, they're one of the bigger air medical providers in the country, we have about 80 bases. So those, those units are very common. When we first came to Paducah with the PHI operation, we didn't have that, and we were having to fly to buy fuel. That's economically not a good business plan, so it's real important to have that, have that unit with us, so we can keep the aircraft. We're, we're using a Eurocopter 135, it's a twin-engine jet helicopter, state-of-the-art, it's about $6 million aircraft, it does burn a bit of fuel.
Is it planned just to have one, just one helicopter here, or is it...
Yes, sir, we'll have, we'll have one, we'll have that one pad, we have the one, one, there'll be, that base will consist of, the on-duty crew will be a pilot, a flight nurse, flight medic, and we have two mechanics assigned to this base, and they work, we have total of four, four nurses, four medics, four pilots, two mechanics.
Can you identify on their map where the tank would be?
I think it's there. Yes.
It's right there.
It's showing.
What are the dimensions of that fuel tank? Is that six feet or six inches? Is it 12 by 24 by...
Yes, sir, it's, it's feet. It's, okay.
I was going to say, it wouldn't be inches.
No, it wouldn't be very big, yeah.
But it's on the rear of the property.
Right. We'll have the, the, there's the pad. There's, there's, there's currently a, there's currently a building there that, where it shows TBR, that's a, just a large shed, and we'll, we'll take that down. And then the structure to the right is the, is a large stor, is a storage building, then we'll have a, we'll have a concrete, concrete pad that will go back to the helipad, so we can move the aircraft in. There's a, there's an electric dolly-type device that picks the aircraft up, and one person can move it in the hangar for weather. We won't be doing any maintenance in that building, any heavy maintenance, there's not going to be a hoist to pull the engine or anything like that, so that, that 50 by 120 building will not have any heating or air conditioning, it'll just be a basic pole barn with vinyl siding. We have, we have several trailers that we have at Mercy Regional that we, they actually belong to the regional hospital system, it's a mobile hospital, about 100-bed mobile hospital, it's on two large trailers. We kind of took ownership of those to store those, so they would stay in our community instead of going out through the purchase area, so we have been, they've been stored in a barn on Schneidman Road, but we're losing that, that facility's being sold, so we, we need the, we need that space for ourselves at Mercy just to handle this, these two large trailers and some other stuff that we, we don't use every day, but it's nice to have.
Any other questions?
Just one, just pop that, they'll have some containment case, they'll spill for that.
It's, 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 it's got its own containment structure around it. When this, when this comes in, it's moved on a large tractor-trailer, it's, it's kind of mobile, but we'll, we'll have, we'll have to pour a pad for that, but when it came to town, it was on a large tractor-trailer, and it's, it's got a containment system with it.
Built-in.
It, it survived the flood out there, so it's pretty sturdy. I think, I think the only thing I might, are, I would, just got some numbers, are the, the payroll for that base is about 1.4 million. So we'll, they'll, we'll be moving that, moving that into the city, which will be a good thing.
This is not a new area to aviation, is it? I flew out of there my first flight, I'm not going to tell you how many years ago, but it was '68 more or less. And I remember Hawk Cave, landing a B-17 out there on a 1,500-foot strip, so it's, it's had some activity.
Right.
Past.
There, there's a lot of history out there.
Yeah, sure is. Any other questions? Call or roll, please, Steve.
Yes, sir. Felcey?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Thank you all very much. Okay, Steve, or any remarks you want to make when we start our workshop here? Steve or Steve? Go ahead. You want to ask some questions, maybe? Or you want to make a statement, or...
I don't have any statements to make, I think it's been pretty well hashed out. You did receive, I believe in your packets, some information prepared by others of the plan.
Yes. Y'all have any...
Sir.
What can we do about the grammar, spelling, punctuation and all of that in this role?
Well, yeah, that, that had come up previously with, with, with PRDA, and we were going through the process of pending approval of the plan, marking those up, correcting those, and getting those right before final publication.
Steve, I noticed they had east and west, looked like they made a mistake on the eastern, west directions consistently, as opposed to north and south.
Well, we see that commonly because the north is, kind of cuts diagonally across blocks here through north.
They split the difference.
So what we tend to call north, some other people call east, but we would make that consistent. I also think, as the consultants wrote it, they refer to the entire district as downtown. Locally, we, we tend to refer to specific areas within the downtown, the riverfront, the downtown proper, and lower town. So you will see some references where they say downtown, and kind of scratch your head and say, well, that's not really downtown, but it was taken as a, as a, as a broader meaning for downtown, and we were changing those as they were appropriate to the document or context of that paragraph.
Not to point the finger of blame, but who, who actually did this report? Was it the consultant or...
Consultants, actually, wrote it, yep.
Reason I was asking, because I reviewed, and I'm glad that I had a chance to see what Joanna did. It looked like it was prepared by two or three different people.
I, I think it was, I think...
The first part of it had the most arrows, punctuation, grammar, context, style. I'm glad I didn't have her in high school for English. I majored in English, by the way, but she did a good job. Y'all have, let's work on it. What, what do you want done? I'd like to, I think I, I don't know if it was the last workshop or one of them, I asked Steve if there was any areas of conflict between this ramp and any existing projects going on, and I think you told me there was one with regarding the parking...
I agree, there's one, one significant one with the parking lot. The previously adopted JJR plan included a provision that the existing parking lot at Second and Broadway would be somewhat dug in a half a level and then a, a green top put, put across it.
So what's in here is null and void, is that what we should take it?
I would consider that to be the, what is previously adopted is what is the current plan. Any, any changes you would seek to make would replace that element from the riverfront plan.
Do you have some questions?
I'm interested in going...
Yep.
Page by page, and I guess...
Steve? Yes.
Just go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to start on, I mean, and some of this is very picky, but I would like to start on page 32. There's a sentence, perhaps the most iconic of these, is a steel giraffe towering over the sidewalk at the corner of Sixth and Madison, which of course is no longer there.
Clearly, it has been...
That needs to come out, for sure. I also, I'm sorry, but page 58, 59, and 60, I would like to see removed, the whole town square section. I think there has been quite a bit of input on that, that that is not where, the direction that we'd want to move in, and I would not like to see it included in the plan.
If you could, remember, one of those of the two tracks, one is privately held.
I know. Still would like to see those three pages removed from the plan. Then on page 61, there is the town square mixed-use development section, which is a paragraph that is highlighted, I mean, it's before the upper-story residence reuse, and it's after the downtown housing section. I would like to see that paragraph removed. Then on page 62, I have some questions about the Executive Inn property. I'm, I'm a little bit, a little bit uncomfortable with the city owning that property now and that being developed for privately-owned, like condominiums and that kind of thing. It seems to me that that would meld so well with the plan that's already been developed for the riverfront, that it would be able to be enhanced, that there would be more offerings that could be done, that the linkage with the, you know, the, the Greenway Trail that's coming through, that all of that could prove to be a magnet for downtown, and, and perhaps this is something that if we got to a point where we needed more development in that area, that we, we could do that, but I'm not sure I want to see that right now on the plan. And there are several things in the plan where I'm not sure, and we've discussed this before, we're not sure they belong in the comprehensive plan. The recommendations, no doubt about it, those are things, and there are certain sections of information that would enhance the comprehensive plan as far as background, but there are a lot of things in the plan that maybe don't belong there. For instance, we talked about the marketing section. I know that the marketing section had to be there as part of the plan, we understand that, that's not a big deal, but I'm not sure that, that, that needs to go into the comprehensive plan.
And it wouldn't, and it wouldn't have to.
Okay, that's just a perception that I have. Moving on, page 98. The first paragraph under the following recommendations are thus offered related to the historic commercial core of downtown Paducah. I would eliminate the first paragraph, which again refers to the town square concept. I think that the other sections are certainly applicable, but that one, again, I would remove.
Which section was that, Kathy?
The first paragraph. While there are a few gaps in the street wall along Broadway, the most serious gap is the lack of any street wall north of Second Street, and perhaps its most important location, the development of the city-owned lot as part of the town square project recommended earlier, results in the construction of a new commercial building that would, among other things, restore the street wall along this important section of Broadway. The input that I've gotten from a lot of people is they don't want to see the street wall restored. They like the open concept of being able to see the flood wall murals, being able to see through, and another thing that kind of bothered me a little bit about the plan was this whole idea that the, the city is cut off from the river. Yes, it is, but that's why that whole opening in the flood wall was created to begin with, was to try to create that linkage between the river and the city. And if you put a building in there, I think you've eliminated that linkage, because...
You do.
There's a hole right there and it's, it's going away. I mean, it's going to cover that up. So, again, my input. Moving along, page 104, the proposed town square development. I would eliminate 104, 105, and 106, all three of those pages. Again, because I don't think, if we're not, you know, they're, they don't belong in the plan if we're not seriously going to consider doing this, and I think the input has been that that's not what people in the community want to see. Moving along...
Even, even on the, certainly the aspect on the publicly-held parking lot, but, but even on the private, privately-held tracks?
Um, I, it all seems to be integrated together into one plan. I don't know if that can be separated out, if it can. I know that there's one section in there that discusses the Jefferson Parking Garage. the Jefferson parking garage. And then there's the Broadway parking garage. Um, you tell me if that's, those are mutually exclusive, or if they are part of a unified project.
I think they could be, I think they could be mutually-exclusive, uh, elements. I think you could carve the publicly-owned lot out because it, it's the lot that fronts the flood wall opening, it's the lot that has the, uh, murals, uh, alongside it, it's the lot that blocks views.
Sure.
Privately-held lot doesn't really do any of, any of those things.
It does.
One component that did work together, if you, if you executed it perfectly to plan, would be numerically, the number of parking spots would be split between those, or apportioned between those, those two things. But-
Can y'all hear?
I think, I think development could easily account for that. Uh, I would, I would not want you to, to see you apply that, those, those same, the same standards of rationale for why we don't want the city lot developed-
I understand.
To the, to the adjoining private lot.
You have a good point. You have a valid point there. So, again, if that could be separated-
I believe it could.
That would be considered. Um, page one sixteen, "The Marina District Residences." Um, this is what I was talking about. I, you know, I, I don't know if now's the time for that, or if now's the time to try to redevelop that property, to bring it back to be a magnet for people to come to the riverfront and enjoy the riverfront. I'm kind of torn between the two. I understand the rationale for development of condominiums along the river. However, I, after last year, if I was a developer, I would certainly think twice about building anything on the wet side of the flood wall. Um, I wouldn't, I would seriously think twice about buying anything on the wet side of the flood wall.
Well, um, let's put a little bit of context with that for people that are watching that, so that they don't think that we have forgotten about it, or, or-
Oh, no. No, no.
Don't think it's important. Um, there are styles of coastal residences where the finished floor elevations are well above, uh, the, the flood elevation, and what you have below is, is parking. So that, in the, in the event you do have those, um, those events that happen, that floodwaters come in, they, they stay below the, the finished floor elevations. And, um, and no, I, I don't think there's, there's a lot of money in the market right now. We certainly don't have anybody approaching Steve or I about that, that property.
Sure.
On, on the other hand, it's, it's been suggested that, oh, we could make that all park space, and it would complement well with, uh, with the new parkland-
It could.
Going in.
It could.
And it would. But, but similarly, I don't believe there's any, any money for that right now either. So-
So do you perceive that it's going to sit there as kind of a concrete and asphalt property for a long period of time? I'm merely asking.
I think right now it's, that's kind of its interim use because it gets used for parking. It'll get used for parking during barbecue, it'll get used for parking during, during the quilt show. Rest of the time, it gets kind of that rough, half-torn-down kind of look and feel to it. It's not the most attractive thing. But to convert it into parkland, um, that's nowhere on our CIP, uh, to do that. It's not to say that, that couldn't happen or, or change, but it's not included in the, in the riverfront park plans. Uh, because at, at the time, the JJR study was done for the riverfront, Executive End was an up and going pri- private enterprise long, long before the city and the convention center foreclosed and took the property back.
Okay. The next section-
We're gonna get-
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just gonna get through it, if that's okay.
No, no, I, I was gonna ask a question.
Oh, sure, go ahead, please.
So, you're looking at page at the top.
Oh, this page?
One oh, one sixteen?
One sixteen and one seventeen.
One sixteen. Shows the berm. I thought it did, but it doesn't.
It does.
Yeah.
I'm one seventeen.
I'm one seventeen.
Where's the parking for that? If somebody wanted to go and look over the flood wall, they park on Second Street?
If they want, right now, if they wanted to?
I mean, if it's there.
If it's developed.
If it's developed, where do they park? On the street?
For, if it were developed as a park or developed as residences.
The berm, yes. Where you can see over-
In other words, where would they get it, where would they go on to?
Oh, um, one of, one of the drawings indicates, uh, a, a, a public parking, uh, area, uh, for that. So it, so if you, um, if you, if you look at the, at the sketches, it indicates, it wouldn't all be residential development, be, you know, fifty, sixty, uh, units, and the rest would be that, uh, park area with public parking, uh, areas. I think it was kind of in, in between. It wouldn't be just pure private development. The plan was it would be split somewhat between, um, feathering in the private development into the public, uh, parkland, along with provision for public parking. As to how many spots, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
I think the question that he had, and the one that I'm still looking at too, at the little drawing that's on here, I see where the condominiums go, but I don't see any parking or anything else.
Which, which page are you looking at?
Page one sixteen, this up here. Is this, is this parking down here? I'm trying to-
It says public, it says-
Trying to answer-
It says public parking underneath it. Presumably, the, the parking for the residences would be incorporated underneath the residences.
So it would be behind the residences?
And then there would be a public, uh, parking area behind the residences. Right.
That, I'm sorry, my eyes are not good. So I couldn't quite make that out, but, okay. Um, page one nineteen, um, "Building the Critical Mass." Uh, "The third pair, the third item, transform four block downtown nexus into Paducah's Town Square, a more intensive mixed-use hotel residential retail development with internal placement and supporting parking." Um, that I had marked for elimination, of course. That might be changeable, if that was in fact something that you were going to change parts of the, you know-
Yes, yes.
But that is something that needs to be looked at. Um, also, also, "Proactively support additional housing, uh, within the Renaissanceary priority areas." Town square, I'm, I'm not sure that would still include housing, would it, if we eliminated town square? Was that not upper level?
It was.
Okay.
I didn't, I-
But that wouldn't, you were putting a hotel on that there?
They're mutually exclusive.
Okay, okay.
Still calls for upper story-
Okay, so you're-
Housing.
You're still calling that town square the Jefferson parking lot, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Um, and the executive inside, which I, again, had a question about. And, final part, oh, page one twenty-one, um, "The downtown hotel hotels strategy." Um, "The fourth item, the downtown boutique hotel should be part of a larger mixed-use development if possible." I understand it says if possible. Of course, one of the things that was in here too was the possibility for renovation of a property for a boutique hotel, which again is another consideration.
Yeah, and if you, I can't recall which page it is, but, but back in the summary, it, there's a, kind of a big orange-colored box that said, "Look within this area."
Right.
So it would include those buildings that would be suitable for inclusion as a boutique hotel.
The next item actually addresses that. Uh, "The best location for a downtown hotel is within the proposed town square development. However, alternative locations within the binding may be considered."
Correct.
Which I think is good.
Correct.
Okay. And then the final things on page one twenty-two, uh, restore, uh, the, "Proactively support business development within the historic core." Um, "Item number one, restore commercial street wall on Broadway from Second to Water Streets." That should be eliminated. And, um, I'm sorry, it's historic preservationist in me. Uh, "Consider selective demolition and infill in appropriate locations under public review process." I think that's fine, but I think that needs to be carefully controlled and monitored. Um-
I think we, we somewhat already, already have that. Um, we have a process, we have a number of the historic areas are covered, or some of the downtown and certainly all of Lower Town is covered by-
Most of Lower Town is, yes. And-
What is-
Very small part of downtown.
What is weak regulatorily is the process by which we judge something being suitable for demolition.
Exactly, which I think is something that needs to be addressed in the plan. Okay. Um, and then finally, uh, page one twenty-three, "Encourage residential development of three to four stories on the east portion of the property." This is again under executive end property.
Yep.
Um, "Lower level, non-flood protected for parking, second level at grade," you know, um, that again, I'm, I'm kind of, um, on the fence about that one. So, I'm sorry. That's my input. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Do I have any comments you'd like to make? Questions? Thank you, Kathy.
I think Kathy hit on a lot of the comments that I looked at, but what I've most, I guess been hearing the most about is that, that parking area that we're talking about, the raised, raised parking area. And the comments from the last two, uh, public hearings, we've got just the concern about the, uh, being able to observe the river from that location without being obstructed by the garage.
Ninety percent of the comments I have taken.
Yeah, that's, that's one of my main objections, is blocking the view of what, for those residences that are already there. And the other thing I wonder about is, um, if we do, if you do something like that with the parking, then you kind of eliminate the barbecue on the river, you know, at that location, anyway.
That comment came up at your last hearing, that there is no inclusion in the plan for event space.
And, uh, I think-
It came up at a, at a public comment period, and, um, the answer was, no, no, it does not. It just, it just doesn't.
And I think it should.
Well, and see, to me, that's what the executive end property would be perfect for, is for festival, but, you know.
Potentially, yes.
Steve, I, I realize you, the focus on new shopping between Water Street and Second Street on Broadway is being considered, but what that, what is that going to do with, for the, um, shops that, that aren't there between Third and Fifth or Sixth? I'm a little concerned about that. And is there any, I, I don't see anything addressing that situation.
Let me rephrase your question. Would, would the inclusion of new development-
I don't think that's going to take away from anything that's already there, or not there already. Well, it would be, it would be something coming in, boutique-y type, uh, small square footage.
Right. The idea was it would be small, small spaces.
A consideration-
Where the, where the demand currently seems to be.
Right. Uh, what is being discussed, or has been discussed, or maybe should be discussed about the, um, on Broadway between Third and, and through Fifth, with all those empty buildings there?
You'd have to direct that question to Lisa Thompson, who's here. I believe PRA and friends of PRA have been working on that issue. The answer seems to be some programs to subdivide them into smaller spaces, because often they were many buildings put together.
Do you get, Steve, uh, this Steve, uh, do you get requests or in, or inquiries from people wanting to open businesses downtown in some of these buildings that we're calling, that he's referring to?
Um, as Steve just mentioned, PRA, Lisa Thompson, their, where their main emphasis is, is getting those downtown buildings occupied. So when questions come in concerning, um, occupancy of those downtown buildings, we forward them on to, uh, their office.
This is Lisa Thompson. She's the PRA director. She's the point person on recruitment, the person that takes nearly all those calls.
Do you think that this is too broad, or you think, um, you have something in your mind and needs to be discussed and explained in this document that we're going to recommend to the City Commission?
Well, I'm, I, to answer your question, which brought me up here, is I get requests on a almost weekly basis for somebody who wants to be a part of our historic downtown. But they're entrepreneurs, they're not developers. And most of these large properties are going to take a developer first to go in there and whitebox them, in order for us to rent them to the entrepreneur who can sort of get going on their business idea. Um, I'm very encouraged by the comments from Ms. Cecilius about removing the development at the parking lot at Second and Broadway. I think that we need to spend the next five, ten years focusing on the historic assets that we have, um, before we look at building additional retail space.
Is there any, is there any effort made to try to get the two together, the entrepreneurs and the developers? Are, is, you working on that?
We are, we are. That, that is one of the things that we are trying to do now, is match, match people that have the development skills with the property owners, because they're not the same people, that own these really large properties. So, anything that could be written into this document that would encourage the city to sort of put their money behind those initiatives would be very appreciative.
What, what was written into the plan was for the city to land bank them, to, to buy up the big old ones and package them for redevelopment. Maybe that means stabilizing them, putting a roof on them, um-
Similar to what happened in Lower Town. There were, there were some properties that were handled that similarly.
Similar to what happened with all the Petter properties in the one hundred block of Broadway, where they were all bought up as a group, put roofs on them, tore the external nonhistoric elements off of them, disposed them for what they were, and then-
Exactly.
And then they became attractive to people. And, and, um, I think that might be part of, uh, same strategy that can be used now, twenty years later, uh, to do the same thing.
That would certainly help stop, stop the deterioration on-
Exactly, exactly.
Downtown.
That's an area, that's an area you have to drive through if you're coming down Broadway to go down to the riverfront or to this first, Second Street area.
Is there any interest in the developers and these other people getting together? Do you find some of them trying, or is it just a lost cause?
No, they are. In fact, if you read the article that was in yesterday's, um, Paducah Sun, we have some property owners that own some of the rather large buildings who are starting to sort of grasp the idea that they can't do this alone, so that they're going to have to make some sacrifices. And that includes bringing in some partners. And it may be that the city, you know, ends up helping to stabilize the roof. Because, you know, if you looked at, somebody said to me today, if we had put a new roof on the Columbia Theater ten years ago, it wouldn't be in the shape that it's in, needing the amount of money today that it would take. So, but those are things that we're working on. But, you know, open space, green space, um, we don't have enough of that. I would love to see the executive end turned into a festival park, um, that could be used for all kinds of events. I mean, it's nice that barbecue on the river and the quilt show parker, you know, will park there, but that's for fourteen days out of three hundred and sixty-five. So what happens to the rest of the time? Then the community can't enjoy that. So-
We have Noble Park, which is full a lot of the time. Why not have another park that could be full a lot of the time, with a view of the river?
Well, right. And the river is such a big part of our history. Um, you know, I like the idea of creating the connection between having an urban park. I mean, Noble Park is a more rural park. I look at, you know, even that parking lot at Second and Broadway, not as a surface parking lot ten or twenty years from now. I look at it as an urban sculptural garden where we have public art. But- But, maybe I said too much.
Close it down, Lisa.
Okay.
Thank you. I guess if, to summarize my feeling is, I don't have any major objections to most of this thing except the one area of the parking and the retail business downtown. I think that ought to be eliminated. And, um, on that. And I would like to see, you know, I don't know how, how they go about doing it and I don't think we're the body to even do this sort of thing, but just, I think the city and the next time it has an opportunity to think of things like they did out in, um, um, I can't think of the last project we had.
Fountain Avenue?
Fountain Avenue. We need, you need to come, the city needs to come up with some method to do equivalents to the downtown area for business.
Well, before there was Fountain Avenue, there was Lower Town. And before there was Lower Town, we were doing that in downtown. We're buying big pieces of property and virtually giving them away to whoever, the entrepreneur that had the great idea, but maybe not all the capital to, to do the purchase. So maybe, maybe, maybe time to do that again.
The public hearing obviously is on the.
We have it on, or the, what day is it?
Sixteenth. I'm sorry.
Sixteenth.
It is the sixteenth of July and I would expect I will receive a few more comments. Uh, I think Lorraine said she.
Yeah, the comments or questions you all might have that we need to address that, uh, we're getting, it's not fine tuned, but at least we got our hand on the dial. Um, comments or questions you'd like to ask? And it won't offend us if it, if you don't like it at all, just tell us, you know, that's why, why we're trying to get a handle on this. And there are a lot of parts, I mean, you take something that's, uh, a hundred and twenty-plus pages, it's not a easy task to interpret it, um, particularly when you have seven areas. It says six, but seven areas, um, that you have to consider and it's, um, frankly, we've had a, a little, and I'm sure whoever put it together had a hard time for a while and I'm sure you all put a lot of thought into it. But we wanna know if, or something that you'd like, they have answered, we'll, we've got the, uh, two Steves here to give a shot at it and we can too. Sir.
Uh, Richard Glasscock, I do live in Lower Town. Thank you, Kathy. I like a lot of your inputs. Appreciate that. Just a couple of fountain, uh, comments. They talk about the binding, not a bad idea, needs to be expanded. Why did we stop it before we got to the Lower Town Information Center, the Texaco Station? Just, you know, I don't need an answer to that, just something.
I will, it was, um, uh, debated. Um, I agreed with Seventh Street, uh, where, where it is located. Consultant recommendation was Sixth Street, I think largely because of the location of et cetera, and that's where more people were, were walking and, and going now. That was largely it. There was, there was good, uh, good discussion about, um, Seventh Street is also where the, um, where the town lift improvements or the current streetscape improvements end at Seventh Street. And then it would tie in nicely back and also it's where, uh, Broadway United Methodist Churches would be a great landmark and a, and a great spot. I think when we get to implementation, I think some of those things you'll see re-debated and, and rethought.
Thank you. Yes, so you had other questions?
Uh, a couple of comments.
Sure.
We talked about what's wrong. Couple of things that are right. The anticipatory signage getting into downtown. Uh, the exact things they talked about, I don't know, but we need to keep people excited from the time they come off of the interstate. And I think that the park where the executive end used to be would be a tremendous draw. Just get families downtown, just, you know, it used to be a park, bring it back. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Al, I haven't seen a sign that says when you're coming west on Third Street that, uh, has a sign pointing to the river, says river, eight hundred feet. I mean, Ohio River, eight hundred feet, you know, we don't, we don't have that. And, um, so people just go straight instead of turning right or left on Jefferson. But, um, that certainly has some impact in here about what they wanna do.
Federal highways never got all the way.
No, it's not gonna happen.
Okay. Well, I think it's happened in some other communities, but I'm not sure if they're a public highway, I mean, uh, federal highway.
It's twenty-four business loops, so the parents have some info on it.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
The roundabout that was put at the intersection of MLK Park, Third and Fourth in several of the drawings, I forget exactly where.
Yes.
Um, that's a whole lot of money that the federal government may not, because it's part of Business Loop twenty-four, may not approve. Let's look at something better and cheaper. Couple of traffic lights could sure slow things down.
That's true. I don't know how it would help at Third and Jefferson. Stop sign.
I think anything to slow the traffic down would help.
Trouble is, if you come to the stop sign, you can't see to your right, uh, because there's a building right there. So it's, you know, it's got some problems. Thank you for your comments there on the money. Anybody else? And, um, Steve, I, I really don't know. You know, an hundred and twenty-eight pages, I highlighted a hundred and seventy-four mistakes, mis spellings and all that stuff, didn't count commas and periods and all those things that are, and a lot of them are, you know, things like how you spell Lower Town or et cetera, or, you know, those things just got, didn't get.
Theater.
Could this not be a standalone plan that's, I mean, where the, the, the recommendations at the end are included in the comprehensive plan? I mean, some of them are already being included in the comprehensive plan or recommended?
I would envision it working like other pieces we've adopted with the comprehensive plan, like the riverfront plan.
What do you suggest?
With regard to?
I'm not gonna recommend anything at my vote to the city commission that has all these areas in it that need to be cleared up.
Well, if we're gonna.
Whose responsibility is that?
Well, it's my responsibility. I will, I will correct those or, or have the, uh, writer of it do it.
Well, I think we've, uh, probe this thing tonight about as much as we can think about probing it. Thank you all for your comments and questions. Thank you all.
Thank you.
This is not an easy process. And it's very, very true, it takes a while to read it. And then to go up through in highlight.
Chairman?
Will there be an amended plan presented to us?
That's what I was gonna ask. Obviously, I've taken notes from what I've heard tonight. How would you all like me to present back those comments to you? Would you like it to be part of your next staff report? Uh, would you like an email or? And if you do have written comments also from what you, uh, have said tonight, I would also appreciate you to send those to me so we can, I can kind of put them together.
Were the members who are not here tonight, did they submit comments?
It was my understanding that I was gonna get some from Lorraine. That's correct.
I know that, uh, Lorraine wanted to have some input into it and obviously she's out of town.
I think, and, you know, we hear, I'm hearing a lot of the same things from different people. And I think once I get the entire list together, I can cross through some of them because, you know, one, one time's enough and just come up with some type of comprehensive list of things or concerns that I've heard. Maybe that could be presented back to you as part of the staff report for you to consider at the public hearing at the next meeting.
Mm-hmm. That would be good, 'cause we do have another meeting before we vote, correct?
Right, yes, we do. No, I don't, yeah, we do, Second July.
That's right, we won't meet that, that's a holiday on, that first Monday in July?
No, July fourth, I think it's on a Wednesday.
Yeah. Particular holiday?
Uh, I just have a question. When we vote, are we gonna vote on, what, you write in the staff report or are we voting on this doc, on this document to present to the city commission?
It'll be whatever you.
Well, my, you know, I think we ought, whatever it is, that's, what gets presented to the city commission isn't what we need to vote on.
Correct.
Sure.
And so if it's an amended version of this, then that's what we need to see next when we vote to do it, in my opinion.
Well, at the next meeting, I think we need to see the amended version before we vote on at the meeting after that. I think we need to all have the opportunity to see that.
Is that possible?
Yes.
Thank you.
I always like to hear that word.
Yes.
I do too.
I agree too.
It's encouraging. Any other business? Thank you all for being here and taking interest in this. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We stand adjourned.